We're gonna make it for a couple of weeks.
Good evening and welcome to April thirteenth, Planning Board meeting before we get something said we don't need said. First item on the agenda is a continuation of a change-of-use site plan for Marty Coe Dumpsters. I'll start. I emailed Lincoln Daly, I think is his name, at Towne Milford, like, three weeks ago or shortly after the meeting, last meeting we were here, two weeks ago, I guess. He replied shortly thereafter, saying he'd only been there a year, he checked with the rest of the staff to see if they'd heard anything. He replied back sometime later, said he talked to various departments and nobody had anything negative to say about Marty Coe Dumpsters. So, nothing negative to me is good. From Milford.
Did you get a chance to go see the site?
No, did I have a chance to go see the site? Mr. Fillmore went with me, well, didn't even go with me, we met at the site. Not what I expected, but I don't know what I expected either, so.
Could you describe it for us, for those that didn't have the opportunity to go?
There was only two of them, so you didn't take notes.
Okay.
Unpurpose.
Yes.
Basically, there was three dumpsters sitting around?
Yeah, three, three twenty-yard dumpsters.
Okay.
Three or four dumpsters sitting there. There was another truck with a bunch of those bins like Goff's ton heads put to trash in.
Yep.
They were all wrapped up brand-new. To be honest, that's all there was. It was...
Was the site relatively clean, at least? Wasn't a bunch of debris?
Compared to his neighbors, yes, it was relatively clean. Yeah. I don't know what I expected to see, but that's not what I expected to see. And then, last night, I went to Conservation Commission, Bruce was also at that one. And, keep wanting to call him Brian, but it's O'Brien, gave us the well test. Everything is within acceptable limits except for iron, which is not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, it's not good, but it's not unusual in New Hampshire. They check for all kind of things. You can, there's three pages of tests there, about two and a half pages of tests there. To put a forty-minute conversation with the Conservation Commission into a two-minute version thereof, we talked about why the iron was high, we talked about what things should be tested for, and the Conservation Commission ended up closing the discussion with no comments to the Planning Board.
Okay. At all?
Right. Period.
Was this, was this water test from the dug well or the, or the?
Drill well.
Drill well. Okay.
I have since talked to Nelson Analytical and Capital Well on the way home today, could because Nelson Analytical, who did the test, doesn't actually pick up the sample, Capital Well picks up the sample, and Capital Well is certainly agreeable to doing some kind of monitoring if we decide we want to do such a thing. And Marty said, and they said also, the test is about three hundred and fifty bucks.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The test costs about three hundred and fifty bucks.
No, it's for that test right there.
Yeah, that's for this.
And that test is the most comprehensive?
No.
Is it too much? Is it more than what we need?
This...
Do we need to, if we decide to require routine testing, does it have to be as expensive as a three hundred and fifty-dollar test? It's going to be a cheaper test?
I don't know.
Can I, can I have that?
Not yet.
The lost folder. Put it in there.
During the discussion with Conservation Commission, Andy Fulton, who works at DES Water Quality, said that the volatile organics was something that should be tested for, and that's probably about...
You said what about? Hundred and twenty dollars or something like that?
And that's a page and a half of these tests. It starts there and is all this page. MTBEs are something they should be testing for, obviously. The fluoride, manganese, iron hardness, pH, those are relatively cheap tests.
Volatile organics is typically what's found in your oil and gas products.
But even if we request him to, or request anybody down there to do water testing, there's no proof it's coming from, the, that, the source isn't coming from that piece of property?
We know that water's coming out of that well, that's all we know.
But we wouldn't know where the source comes from?
Nope.
Yeah.
We also just received an email from Jerry Haynes, addressed to Chip, that I will read. Did you give, what's her name?
What's her name?
A comment?
Yeah, I would...
Jen, is that her name? Okay.
Yes.
I'm not good with names, she's new.
No, I'm renting.
So, while I read it, she doesn't have to type it while I'm reading it. The email's dated yesterday, April twelfth. Chip, as you know, I am the last one that wants to hinder business development, I only have a couple of concerns about a transfer station being located next to my property. Now, keep in mind, we haul from many transfer stations around New England, Cape Cod, Taunton, Westboro, Mass, just to name a few. One of the concerns is rats. I have a feeling they may like to find a home in the warm mulch in the winter. The other concern is plastic and paper and plastic flying around the area, and the last thing I want to do is pick trash out of my mulch. These places I am talking about have no MSW instances trash, but they still have rats, paper, and plastic. If we can contain these things, I have no issues. I am sorry I couldn't make it to the meeting, I'm available any time for questions, you have my number, Jerry Haynes.
Mr. Kirk. Page thirty-three, twenty-five, four, nine.
What was that page number?
Thirty-three. This is industrial zone, which I think they're in. It says, "This is a non-permitted use, animal reduction or garbage dumping."
Page twenty-three?
Thirty-three.
Okay, page thirty-three, what section?
Twenty-five, point four, point nine.
Twenty-five, four, nine, okay.
I don't believe recycling is garbage dumping.
I think, it's, it's clear to me that he's dumping garbage. He's dumping it inside, but he's clearly dumping garbage.
He's unloading trailers, is that dumping?
Yes.
Well, he was also, I believe, he also stated that he was, had customers that picked up refuse at.
Yeah.
Brought them to, he's planning on bringing them to the site, sort them, and then bring them to the incinerator, if I remember correctly.
But the process of doing that involves what I think most people would consider dumping. It's true, it's not outside, in a, in a, you know, a major outdoor dumping site.
I don't, I don't think that's what it means here. I think it means dumping in the sense of disposing of it on the site.
Yeah, unloading a truck to me is not dumping.
Not just dumping it out of the truck and picking it up again, but just, I would interpret it as disposing of it on the site.
The garbage dumping...
Garbage dumping would be, I would think it is, be long-term storage.
Landfill.
Yeah, that's the way I would interpret that.
But it says animal reduction.
Well, that's feeding animals, something that makes them shrink.
No, I suspect that's rendering.
I would agree that's rendering.
Oh, rendering is a previous line, see, it's a totally different line.
No, that's fat rendering, but this is animal reduction. Well, maybe you're right.
Animal reduction is what farmers do when they throw a dead cow in the manure pile.
Or they dump it over the side of the hill.
Yeah.
I, I think, well, I think that, that there is some sort of sense, I have the sense that non-permitted uses in this area includes garbage, whether it's recycling, dumping, or, or anything else, but this was not to be a use in the industrial area. I understand how others could read it differently.
I, I think you're right, I think, I think twenty-by-four-nine is kind of vague, and it could be interpreted that way.
To me, a garbage dump is not a transfer station, a garbage dump is a landfill. You're dumping it, picking it up, and hauling it away. Unloading a truck, picking it up and hauling it away, that's not really a dump, in my opinion.
Particularly when it's dumped inside the building.
Yeah, it's a, it's a sorting facility.
Mr. Dahlberg or Mr. O'Brien, have anything to add? Now, we mentioned at the site walk, that putting in, possibly putting a note in the plan stating that any dumpsters stored outside would have some kind of covering, didn't, without being specific about what kind of covering.
And I believe the last...
I mean, the dumpsters are small enough, you could probably do it with three sheets of plywood and a tarp.
I believe the last meeting...
We talked about shrink wrap.
He, he, he brought up the shrink wrap idea.
Well, I did, but he, whatever, yeah.
Something, it was mentioned.
Like I said, looking at the dumpsters, I think three or four sheets of plywood would cover most of it with a tarp over top, but then the water would be...
But in the wintertime, I mean, snow can just cave in with plywood.
We would rip them off.
Bungee cord and weights and all kinds of things you can do.
Just snag them.
You can, you can do it. I've bungee corded tarp from my boat before, and it's held up through the weather.
I mean, a tarp, a tarp with, with the two-by-fours sticking out the middle is enough.
I mean the plywood to keep the tarp from sinking. If this, if this, if this was a dumpster, you put a tarp, plywood this way, and the tarp won't fall in.
Well, I mean, if we ask him to keep it covered, he can keep it covered any way he wants, I guess, as long as it's covered.
Yeah, there's no reason for us to say how, but how you have to know it as long as it's done.
We're going to have a problem.
If he wants to cover it with a pole barn, he can cover it with a pole barn.
He just specified it has to be covered.
Right.
That would solve the water, we're not a contamination concern, at, at least from my, from my standpoint.
Your bank was going to do something to make sure the site wasn't contaminated, did that come back okay?
Yeah, that came back good.
The environmental testing, that part.
And the water test?
The water test was of the well, that's what we wanted to have done.
We talked about the water test a little bit last night, I mean... That's a good, now that he's done that water test, I mean, that's before he's stepped foot on the property as far as business-wise, that's a good baseline.
And so, what happens if the next water test comes back with all of those values over the limits?
Then it would take some investigation to figure out where it's coming from.
Then we know something happened.
But we don't know if it was there or someone next door. It's a rare day to not teach a well, fails a well test. If it comes back, that clean will be in line, yeah. But you only remember one.
And so, who's going to pay for all the cleanup that has to be done?
No idea.
Might want to consider doing, making a decision on that now, so we don't have that issue later, and everybody understands what the economic burdens are.
I don't think it'd be fair to make the applicant pay for it.
Oh, no.
If we don't know, if, if the well did fail, and, but there's no way to prove that it start, it failed because of what happened on that piece of property, it's not fair to have that applicant.
And for the testing, would it come that, whether you do soil testing?
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be able to tell from testing his well, where the contamination came from, I wouldn't believe. I think you'd have to possibly drill other wells, monitor other wells, figure out where...
But who would pay for that, though?
There are precedents down in that area as to who pays for what. I think Mr. Haynes could testify to what it takes to clean up something that happens on somebody else's piece of land.
What happened to the, I don't know, I guess it wasn't a, it was a discussion about testing the shallow well, you know, where...
Yep.
And that didn't happen.
Well, the, the bank tested the, the drill well.
Right.
Right.
Well, the dug well, without commission, this is no one.
Right, but it would tell you, would give you, would be indicative, would be more than indicative, it would be a positive test of what's in the upper.
I think you'll find that it's full of iron and manganese, heavy, heavy, heavy concentrations of iron and manganese, because that well, that well intercepts seasonal high water table as per, not the same water table that the Artisan well has. We're talking two different portions, and, you know, what has gone on site, upstream, as it were, who knows?
Has probably contaminated, or, surface water.
Right, sure, or, or possibly does.
Yeah, but I mean, even runoff, just across the site, didn't even have to park it over ground.
No, I, that would not be the same, same thing, same water table, I don't think that that would do anything for this board.
Any thoughts about odors?
Personally, I'm more concerned about the rats laying in the dumpster than the odors, but...
Some of the neighbors may not appreciate the odors on hot summer days.
Was there any odor when you went to Milford?
No.
In the whole day?
Well, it's April, unless he went on the eighty-nine degree day.
No, when, I had a jacket on, it was kind of breezy, I, but he, it's, I mean, there was nothing stored. There was no bales of things waiting to be trucked out.
So...
It's almost like the operation where it's going to be completely different than what's in Milford.
Hypothetically, let's assume odors emanating from this establishment wafted over to some of the residential areas. What happens? They have to bring lawsuits?
I would hope they first contact Mr. Meanian.
I, I assume that they contact Mr. Meanian, as much as he tries, it's still a problem. What happens?
What happens, Chip?
He fixes it.
You haul it back in here, and you have him address this?
Only, only if we put something in, as a condition, in the...
Must comply with zoning.
For what?
Performance standard.
Our performance standards are, I believe, somewhat vague.
Oh, well, I don't know about that.
Could you tell me where we set them out?
Chapter, or, section three, I believe, is the performance standard?
Yes. "Any use of land shall not be unreasonably obnoxious, excessively offensive, to the extent that it be injurious to the public health and safety, a reasonable expectation of comfort, peace, and quiet enjoyment of the community or neighborhood, et cetera, because of noise, including but not limited to excessively loud music, vibration, smoke, fumes, glare, odor, dust, et cetera."
Jack thought, Jack thought of everything.
And what happens if Jack?
Who lives, who lives down the street.
Who lives nearby, and, has a problem, does he go to see you?
Yep.
And what would you do?
What would I do? I would write him a letter telling him that if he didn't fix it, I would take him to court.
Fix what?
The odor. Make it go away.
It has to be injurious.
Has to be excessively offensive.
Excessively.
I, I don't think you could do much with this, this verb.
Unreasonably obnoxious.
Would be hard to, fortunately, that's what we're having on our zoning. Some people, they don't really...
That's what zoning says.
But we can put in other standards when there's, when there's a, when a particular use...
Jack, Jack thought that one up all by himself.
Is more likely to generate this than a typical use.
Just as a comparison, if you go to our own transfer station, granted, if you're throwing your trash into the trash dumpster with the garbage, there's an odor there, but as you drive through it, or you toss your recycling in, you're not overwhelmed by this odor that comes from the trash. I, I don't think that with this being inside, and really dealing with fairly small amounts at a time compared to the trailer at the dump, on our transfer station, that, that odor traveling through the neighborhood is, is going to be an issue. Just the volume is different than it is at transfer station. I feel my sense of smell is pretty normal, and I don't feel going down with my trash that there's this obnoxious odor as I go through the transfer station.
The, the, the overhead doors are in the rear of the building, and there's no residential property adjacent to, to that side of the building, and I don't think the odors are going to permeate the front of the building and go off the front window, and the first one is going to go to Bruce's house.
I think it's...
Bruce's the closest house.
Is that true?
There is, the, the closest residential property on the side of the doors is probably across that great meadow, it's got to be three thousand feet away.
It's probably about to the east.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
What about the industrial properties and the workers there? His neighbors?
They're, they're citizens, if there's a problem, they can complain to Chip, they'll have to address it.
And the only neighbor that complained, didn't complain about odor.
I actually kind of agree with Tom, because I was just thinking, the only time I ever really noticed the odor is dumping the aluminum cans, and you smell the stale beer from the aluminum cans, and the...
Yeah, that's the worst...
That's the worst, that's the worst part of the whole thing. Where, where my shed, when I'm getting the trash out of my shed, begin with.
I, I think the full, the performance standards, as a resident, I think they should just forward to Chip enough, Pete, to, to go after Mr. O'Brien if there's an issue, just like anybody else that has an improved site plan. If there's a problem versus a nice letter or a phone call.
And most people don't want to go to court. It interrupts their business.
Oh, that's right.
And it, and it costs them money, so usually, if someone is a reputable businessman, he usually complies with my first letter.
Yeah, if what he's going to have tied up into buying the property, I mean, he's going to have to, he's got a lot at stake there if it doesn't go well.
I have a question for the applicant. When we did the site walk, we were given a, a packet of information. And in that packet, there was a, some kind of powder or chemical that you, that you spread on the refues.
Right, you, you sprinkle it on, it deodorizes the, the smell.
Is that temporary, like, or is that, is that like a complete odor eliminator?
Well, it eliminates odor for a certain period of time.
Okay. How long does that last? Minutes or hours or days?
The hours.
Okay. And how often do you plan on, once, once you've sorted out all the, all the recyclables, and you've got refues that you're planning on bringing up to the incinerators, how, how long will you be storing the refues on the site?
I would say no more, maximum, I'd say probably seventy-two hours, about three, three days or, if you keep it shut.
Would there ever be any other circumstance that you would not be able to send it out in seventy-two hours?
The worst case scenario, I mean, if I had a breakdown, then I'd have to, you know, call a friend of mine to come in and haul it, like, if it was case.
Now, would it be inside for that seventy-two hours?
Yeah, yeah. Everything's going to be contained inside, nothing's going to be outside.
With putting something on the site plan stating that all refues has to be removed with, all stored refues has to be removed within seventy-two hours of being brought in, be acceptable from an odor standpoint, Neil?
That would certainly go.
And then, the chemicals that they, they sprinkle on it, or, or what, spray it on it, whatever, as technology improves, maybe they're just spraying, they can, maybe one of those big old Febreeze things from the ceiling, you never know.
They, they do have those.
Sure they do.
Yeah, the system of body dissection kind of goes down.
All you have to say is utilizing best management practices.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. O'Brien's been operating for ten years in Milford. I know firsthand that Milford has quite a little town government going on, and planning, planning staff, and if there were issues, and there are residences all around that property in Milford, I certainly have one, I know exactly where this property is, and its facility's located. If there were major issues, I think he would have gotten that, he'd be on a phone call.
I think I would have too.
It was a job that needs to be done. We want to create garbage and waste, and Mr. O'Brien's figured out a way to make money out of it. I think the town has deep, that there's an issue, and it's an approved site plan, and you can, you can invoke affirmative by EB and force him to, into compliance. I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Yes, sir. I'd like to read the proposed use here, and make sure everybody understands that this is what they believe is going to be happening. Proposed uses of site, recycling distribution center, recycling of products, C and D, construction...
Demodul.
Materials that can be recycled, and MSW, leftover materials from municipal solid waste that can be recycled, all to be processed inside the existing building, all materials are containerized, baled, and shipped weekly to markets. No recyclable material shall be stored outside. Outside storage of dumpsters, company vehicles, and employee vehicles only. It says nothing about garbage.
Well, MSW is municipal solid waste, that's garbage, that's whole garbage.
That is?
Yeah. So, he's been right at the front of what he's going to do.
Okay. The seven, this, the seventy-two hour issue would have to be added to this.
He states a week, I mean...
That's forty-four.
Well, just, how about five days?
Well, he said seventy-two, that's seventy-two, but regardless, that, whatever that is, that needs to be added, and, whatever language you're going to have about shrink wrapping would need to be added.
If, if the, if the refuse is going to be stored inside, and I would assume that when he's not working, outside of business hours, the doors are closed, I can't imagine him going to work at seven o'clock in the morning and open those doors.
On Monday.
Even Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, if the stink is that bad inside, what...
He's going to want to get rid of it.
He's, he's going to be taking care of it. I, I don't, the more I think about it, I don't think the odor's going to be, it should be an issue, and if it is, I pity his workers and himself.
It says, "No recyclable material shall be stored outside." That means he can restore, he can store outside anything else. Is that the intention?
No, we got to say, we got to say...
So, no recyclable or other materials shall be stored outside. Outside storage of dumpsters, shrink wraps dumpsters, company vehicles or employee vehi, and employee vehicles only.
I'd probably put no recyclables and MSW to be stored outside. Because MSW will cover all, all the stuff that they cannot, although not recycle. As for the shrink wrap...
We wouldn't limit it that, that, just cover it.
Yeah, just leave it upon him to come up with the best way to cover it, whether he decides to build a pole barn in the future, or a tarp with a two-by-four holding up the middle.
Then, then you, then we need to say in here that this must be done, because the way this reads now, he's not required.
That's correct.
Well, we, that was a good, not an negotiation point, but we knew that was coming, Neil, we just hadn't figured out a method of what would be the most economical way for him to cover it. We already agreed at the last meeting that he would cover the dumpsters in some manner, in some way, shape, or form.
Then that language needs to be added.
Yeah, I'm just waiting to add all of it to the plan to, to make it all at once. I don't want to go through two or three sets of regulations. Whatever, whatever language you want, if this is included or, or taken off the plan, I'm more than happy to do that.
Hey, on these material safety dates, you've got, there's two products you might use, right?
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's, it's a fine surprise to be used, because it's pretty tough to, like...
The one they talk about here is citronella, right? We've had some citronella, right?
Yeah, yeah, white powder you sprinkle around.
Pretty ruddy stuff, though, right?
Yeah.
Some little pellets, too, just little pellets.
Mr. Chairman, when we, if this were to be approved, are we also approving sixteen in addition to seventeen? Sixteen is the existing uses of the site. Or are we converting, sixteen is, as a result of this, proposed uses would be allowed, but the existing uses would not be? Is that correct or not?
You don't have the most recent plan, Neil. Note sixteen, the last sentence says, "The existing uses shall be discontinued upon approval of this plan in the transfer of property."
What, what's the date of that plan, Mike?
Revision was three, ten, seventeen.
We, I don't have that, could you give us a copy of that? Thank you.
Give us everyone, please, sir. I missed that call you, sir.
Mike, why do you have the existing uses? Are they to be continued?
It's, uh, no, it's, it's a wire requirement, 36.
The existing shall be discontinued, okay. Thank you.
What's on this one?
Garbage.
It does say in 18, no household waste to be stored outside.
You wanna change that household to that MSW terminal, okay?
Yeah, it should be consistent.
Yeah. Right here, it says, no household waste, we gotta change household to that MSW.
We may ignore on the plan of what MSW means and what C and D means.
You, you do that already.
Do I?
MSW, paren, leftover materials from municipal solid waste that can be recycled.
These, I'm so busy, I forgot to do that. Sorry.
Um, and did we, did we have any discussion of the hydraulic fluids? Because this says he can do what, this says that he can take those, use those, as long as they are quote, "contained," whatever that means, and properly disposed of off-site. So, this could allow him, the way this language is written, to change his business to reprocess or recycle hydraulic fluids, any fluids.
Before we get on to that, if I go back real quick to 17?
Yeah.
Definition of MSW, leftover materials from municipal solid waste that can be recycled or cannot be recycled? I thought MSW cannot be recycled.
It's part of the, the process when it comes in.
Okay.
The loads sometimes get mixed, so you pick through the, pull the guy who paid for the coal and the load.
Recycling of products, C and D, construction materials that can be recycled, and MSW, leftover materials from MSW that can be recycled, what about the non-recyclables?
The non-recyclables would be trash, garbage, that's your MSW.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he's saying, the definition, the legacy of MSW.
The definition says that, that the MSW can be recycled.
Well, it's gonna go to the incinerator, so it's gonna get burnt as energy, the leftover.
Incineration is recycling?
Well, it's a form of recycling, it, you turn it into energy, yeah, burning it for power, versus burying it in the landfill.
So what can't be recycled out of MSW?
Well, I mean, pretty much all your regular, your plastics, everything's pretty much recyclable.
What do you mean by leftover materials?
Like your, your garbage bag, your, uh, any non-recyclable product.
Make it simple for me, I take my household trash to the dump, and we have to sort it, so I put the paper here, and I put the cans there, the bottles there, and everything else that doesn't fit one of those categories goes into a plastic bag and we throw it into the hopper.
That plastic bag, if thrown in the hopper, that you did not, that part that you did not recycle, that was not recyclable, that's the part that will go into the incinerator.
That's your MSW.
So what is it that you get at your site?
It's gonna be all of that, and what happens when the trucks dump out, you have, it's like a 60/40, you have 60/40 mix, so what I'm gonna do is retract as much as that recyclable out of the garbage.
The paper, the plastic, it's all-
That got mixed in with the garbage.
So if I didn't do a good job and put some of the plastic in my black-
Right, some of the stuff got loose, it's in, mixed into the bags.
Okay, so you take that out of my garbage, and that you recycle along, do you get the other recyclables too?
Yeah.
The plastic?
Yeah.
Which may be baled or ready?
My detergent spray, yeah.
Okay. And then the stuff that you can't remove from that is garbage, garbage that gets burned?
Correct, yeah.
The only reason I brought it up, I just want, I wanted to make sure that that, the word "can" be recycled, I wanna make sure "can" is actually the proper term, versus "cannot," I just wanna make sure that wasn't a typo, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Oh, that's fine.
How about we change note 17 to read something like, proposed uses of recycling, recycling, read the whole thing, recycling distribution center, recycling of proposed, recycling of products, C and D, construction materials that can be recycled, uh, MSW, parentheses, municipal solid waste, end of parentheses, all to be processed inside the existing building. And then the end of that sentence, outside storage, strike of dumpsters, company vehicles and employee vehicles only, outside storage of dumpsters shall be, shall have a watertight covering. Instead of note 17.
Well, no, I, I don't agree with the watertight covering, cause if he does a hole barn, that's not watertight covering.
You just say either undercover or watertight covering.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
But, when I, when I go to the dump, I bring my used motor oil, and I pour it into a container.
And you're not supposed to, you're supposed to sit on the bench and walk away.
Okay, I, I put it on the bench, they dump it in, but the point is, I, I distribute, or I dispose of that at our dump. You take that-
No, we don't. No.
Then why do you have this any fluids, including hydraulic fluid, fluids? Why, why, how would you dispose?
If we happen to come across it, and it comes into one of the loads, if someone resident might hit it in the van, if we happen to catch it, we'll repackage that and we'll go like the household has as waste.
In where?
Well, household has as waste.
In where?
No, well, I can go to Nashville, I can go-
Because we don't have, we spend $6,000 a year, and many people are not able to have their household hazardous waste treated, because we run out of money before they get to the dump.
At the same time, Neil, if you have a half-full liter, liter of soda, and you throw it in there, and it's all flat, you don't dump it out, you just throw it in the garbage, he's gotta do something with the liquid.
But he's talking-
He's mentioning other liquids, he's, he's mentioning hydraulic fluid, and he's saying other fluids.
Basically, if-
So it could be water, it could be-
I, I-
Soda, it could be-
Someone walked by, throws a-
Beer, it could be, anything.
A container of waste oil in one of his dumpsters, they're not supposed to, if he encounters that, he says he'll deal with it. He doesn't process liquids and oils as, as part of his business, but he has to be prepared to deal with that.
Thank you for clarifying that, is there some way that we could make it clear that that's the case here? Because the way this reads, he could decide to go out in the garbage processing business, and in 18, go into the fluid disposal business.
Wouldn't he have to come back for a change of his site plan to do that?
No, because 18 allows him to deal with any fluids, including hydraulic fluid, or refus from the site shall be contained and properly disposed of off-site.
That are, that, that's a byproduct of his site plan.
Well, if we say that, it's a byproduct.
And if he changes it from a byproduct to a full operation, that's a change of his site plan. All you have to put is any changes require a site plan approval.
So, in 18, if we said any fluid, any fluids that are a byproduct of MSW, including hydraulic fluid, or refus from the site, shall be contained and properly disposed of off-site in a timely manner.
Do we really need to specify hydraulic fluid?
Well, he does, I didn't put that in.
What are the odds you're gonna collect hydraulic fluid versus oil?
One to none.
I just, I would suggest take hydraulic fluid, hydraulic fluid out.
Any fluid.
It says any fluids, you don't, you don't need hydraulic fluid.
We can take hydraulic off, just eliminate any possible invasions.
And then just include the parentheses, include the byproduct of the collection of household. Just to show you're not seeking that.
Right, yeah. We highly educate our customers as well, through our emails and so forth, honestly, do as adults.
When you collect the household, just all going to one, you go and ask your customers what?
Uh, it's, it's single stream, so they'll, they'll bag it up and put in one thing, we pull it off.
You seem like this is pretty radical. I don't think, got lost in the, uh-
I don't have any other questions.
You have any language on here about, um, ceiling, floor, or the plumpers in front of the doors yet, am I?
We, we're thinking alike, I'm just writing down PLR 350, drive over, temporary removable barriers to be placed on all doors.
Over here. There are, there are a lot of other doors on the other side. This probably won't be going in, I don't know.
Wait, I saw what we were saying, is groundwater, which is not an issue, is that correct?
I don't think anybody said that yet, no.
Okay.
I think it's being minimized as much as we can.
We were saying that it's highly likely that the existing well is contaminated, that the drill well barely has a shell.
I think that potential exists, yeah.
And chances are, no matter where you dug a well, they have to be more of the same. We also talked about trying to, oh, I'm not sure, cause I don't know what a monitoring well does, where, where it checks, groundwater, or, yeah, or both. Usually they're deep enough to avoid the first water table.
Hmm?
Typically they're deep enough to avoid the first water table, to go down 10, 12 feet, 12 more. So they stay above ledge? Yeah. Okay, they're not in the ledge at all. Okay. Well, depending, might or might not have a containment, don't think down here it exists, but, how far is the ledge down there?
Good question.
Yeah?
I, I'm guessing it probably doesn't exist.
Pardon?
Probably doesn't exist there that we could, that we could go. That's, that's, that's an outwash plain, that was probably all underwater, when the glacier melted, and you just go back in, I doubt that there's any ledge that it can handle.
Well, that drill well hasn't been a ledge, right?
Not necessarily.
Oh, I remember that, that would be a rush well if it wasn't in, in ledge.
They, they can get, um, they can get a big till that would be like a ledge.
I don't think, well, cases of, 50 feet, that might. Oh, you hit ledge, what, at 50 feet, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think the drill well is, is an issue, if, if that's contaminated, it's not coming from the bark most next door.
The drill well?
Yeah.
Well, we're already agreeing the drill well's not a problem.
It's from, it's from another source, and, and that well has been there long enough, the drill well has been there long enough, if there are contaminants, contaminated and volatile organic, you know, and they test it for everything.
I don't think we were too worried about the drill well, though.
Well, we're not using the, we're not using the dug well.
Right.
In fact, I shouldn't, I shouldn't feel that, but, um, we're not using the, I mean, who else?
Well, why are we concerned about an aquifer, even, I guess, if contaminated water is not an issue, and we're only in the aquifer, and why worry? If we're not worried?
Because we have, we, we have an aquifer right now, that we have a test, one, that says it's not, not, not contaminated. Over top of the extra part. We have one test, we don't even know if it's in the aquifer, we don't know where the well is, we know the well is here, we don't know how deep it is, we know nothing about it, except that water came out of it. That's all we know.
You could go to, you could go to wells on the other side, the other side of the, the industrial part, they can be contaminated. The funny thing about groundwater, right?
You could drill, you could drill along the other side of the building, it could have been contaminated.
Where the water comes from that feeds that well, there are different veins underground, and you're lucky to tap one, but you could go about 20 feet away, that's a different vein, it's not the same vein, that's why it's so difficult to track sometimes.
Especially in ledge.
Contamination. Because you could ask Andy the next time you see him, um, that groundwater flows in different veins, and you can go, you can go 100 feet away and have a complete vein 20 feet away.
Well, you're trying to hit a crack in the bedrock, is all you're trying to do. If you did a different crack, you'd get different water. Anyway, holding the, holding the monitoring out. I'm gonna stick with what I said in note 17 before, except that any dumpsters stored outside shall have a watertight covering, or under a watertight roof, and another note saying that, out of that, PLR 50, drive over, temporary removable barriers to be placed on all overhead doors, existing concrete floors shall be sealed to be watertight. I don't know what we wanna do, if anything, about mon, water monitoring. I would like to think we could do something, but I don't know what-
I'm gonna get that same test done annually, and I'll-
Is there a less expensive test I can give?
Well, if they just did VOCs, it would be about half that cost, told Andy what he said last night. So you're not, you're not worried about the groundwater?
Um, we're still talking about it.
Well, is there any plan, I mean, is there, is there other options?
Is a VOC test gonna be all we're concerned with? I'm not that familiar with water tests, so I'm not sure.
That's the, that's the VOCs of volatile organic compounds.
Okay, that's oils and such.
Yeah. With what, with what they make paint out of today?
Yep.
Paint's not a problem anymore.
Okay.
Um, same with any finishes that you can buy for home use, that's all, all water-based stuff.
Okay. So we don't need, if we go that route, we don't need to request that $350 test, that tested all that stuff?
That, that would cover petroleum products getting dumped. Gas, MTB, the thing with MTB is, MTB is one of the thinnest compounds out there, that really travels fast, so if you check MTB, you're checking for things behind it at the same time.
Okay.
And the government made them with that in.
The annual testing you have done for your certification through the state, um, does that include any water testing?
Where I'm at right now currently, Neil?
Yes.
No, I'm not quite as good as you are.
For, for the, for the state licensing, you're checking pressure, okay?
Give me a little thing again.
The what?
Your, your booklet.
Oh. Things I have to do for you. Things I have to do for you.
Yeah, I see it. Where's the water test?
He didn't give it to me.
Yes, I did. I put it in there. Nope, I didn't.
You need to listen.
I, I put it in there. We see it's right there.
Are we reinventing the wheel?
No, I'm not reinventing the wheel.
Okay.
Existing, existing drilled well to be tested annually, the water shall be tested for the same contaminants, contaminants as the previously submitted test dated three thirty-one seventeen. The test results shall be delivered to the land use coordinator. I don't know what test to take out, I don't know what test to add to your blood.
I think that will at least give us something.
It will.
And I think we need to work on, there's a, there's a board somewhere, somewhere in our package, some...
It wouldn't hurt for us to come up with an idea how we're gonna...
An idea for, to apply across the board for, for industrial zones.
No, maybe this particular industrial zone would be great for that.
Well.
Well, hopefully they'll really come in for a change in use.
As soon as they come in for a site plan, then we can ask them to monitor a well.
Yeah.
Like I said earlier, we've had eight or nine since I've been on board. We could have eight or nine wells being monitored right now. Does anybody from public have any comment? Saying no, no, close the public comment. Do they also have any comments, questions, suggestions?
I'd like to see a cheaper, uh, water test be required instead of the, the more expensive one, but without knowing, without knowing what test that is, I don't know.
Calling that more expensive is maybe not true. I think there are tests that could cost three times as much, very easily.
But if, if there's a less expensive test that tests just the, the VOCs, then I don't think requiring one that is as expensive as that one. If they can get away with that fifty dollar one versus a four hundred dollar.
Well, the VOCs are about, I think, you said two hundred dollars out of that, something like that?
I'm just using as a example.
Plus we have to add MTBE, and, because I don't think MTBE is part of VOCs. But it was on, it was on that test. So you're still gonna be up to two fifty, so it's not four fifty.
Okay. I just don't want to see us requiring him to pay out more than he needs to, that's it.
If anybody has a brilliant way to, how to word that monitoring note so we can, so we can change it upon an agreement with him and us, I wouldn't mind seeing it added.
Which one is that?
If we wanted to change the water test, and he wanted to change the water test, in other words, we come up with an idea that's gonna be cheaper.
Just put in, unless otherwise agreed to, by the board. So at any time he could come in and say, I've got a better, better way to do it, if the board agreed, that would solve the problem.
I think if he comes back next year and you get the, the test results that are exactly the same thing, there's no call form, right? There's no recolly, um, in the normal water test, what you do at your house is fine, then you could probably, you could probably narrow that scope down. But I would, you know, a year or two, I would think that you have your baseline.
Yeah, I mean, if we had some time, we could probably get ahold of DES and Southern Hampshire Regional Planning and maybe find some information how to limit the test or whatever. And we may be testing the wrong place to begin with, because we don't even know how deep the well is. What we're testing maybe...
I don't know who built the well, but we can find all that out.
Oh, I know we can. Call Capital Well and ask them, and probably find out real easy.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, I could have asked them when I was driving, driving home tonight, and I didn't think of it. Of course, I lost signal someplace over here, too.
What is, what is the leftover material from municipal solid waste? What is that?
That's what can't be, that's, that's a non-recyclable commodity. That's, that's what's gonna go to the interior.
You don't have a plan in front of you, do you?
No. Take this one.
That's probably the least desirable product that you would handle, isn't it?
Yeah.
And it sounds like you could actually, you could focus on that if you were so inclined. I would think would, I would think would be a, what would I say, have a higher value to you, because you're handling something that, uh, that, uh, is probably, uh, there's probably fewer places that can do it, I guess.
Right.
If you took note seventeen, ended in second line, ended differences after materials, construction materials, end of parentheses. Erased that can be recycled. Leave and MSG, parentheses.
You don't want to take that away, Craig, because there are construction materials that contain all sorts of chemicals. And if you say that can be recycled, that means he can't take those in. If you take those words out, that means he could take them in, and I don't think you want that.
What?
Say, say he's taking in a pressure treated wood.
Okay.
Right now, he can't, as I understand this language.
Well, it might be CND, CND, that's CND, that'd be fire recycling.
But you can't recycle pressure treated wood, right?
Well, you can't. There's a plant down in Salem, LLC, and that's all they specialize in, all sorts of wood, pyramidal boards, pressed boards.
They ship that out, I believe.
Yeah, they ship it all out.
And, and they take, um, pressure treated wood?
Yep.
And what do they do with that?
It's all ground, ground up.
And then?
Then they ship it to their, their mixed market. It gets reprocessed into another board or...
Recycled.
Yep.
Recycled from his company to another company is recycling further.
Well, all I'm trying to say is that note reads right now, recycling of products CND that can't be recycled. Well, you're not gonna recycle products that can't be recycled. So you're being redundant saying that can't be recycled twice, is where I was going. So your recycling products are CND, construction materials.
You're right, you're right.
And MSW, municipal solid waste, end of parentheses, all to be processed inside the existing building. All materials are containerized, baled, shipped weekly to markets. No recycled materials shall be stored outside.
Nope.
Outside storage of company vehicles, employee vehicles only. Any dumpster stored outside shall have a watertight covering or under a waterproof roof.
And emptied?
Yeah.
Only clean, empty dumpster stored outs, can be stored outside, under watertight covering. Thank you.
Uh, we, we talked briefly earlier about how long the MSW is gonna stay on site, or we leave it at a week?
The only reason we're talking about it last, last time was odor. I don't think odor's gonna be an issue myself.
It's gonna affect him first before anybody else.
If he, if he, yes, if those doors are closed at night and he comes into work in the morning, it's gonna be nasty. Add a note about the existing drilled well. Did you get that wording that I've scribbled off?
Sure.
Existing drilled well to be tested annually, the water shall be tested for the same contaminants as the previously submitted test dated three thirty-one seventeen. The test results are to be delivered to the land use coordinator. Let's just leave it at that.
I'm gonna wait for a minute.
PLR three fifty, drive over temporary removal barrier to be placed under all overhead doors. Existing concrete floor shall be sealed to be watertight.
And?
I'm sure I'm missing something.
Number eighteen, it should read, any fluids that are a byproduct of MSW shall be contained and properly disposed of off-site in a timely manner. Um, no waste, not just household waste, but no waste to be stored outside.
Can you read that again? Any fluids?
Any fluids that are a byproduct of MSW shall be contained and properly disposed of, and the rest is there, off-site in a timely manner, period. No waste, delete the word household, no waste to be stored outside. Sorry, don't MSW waste be stored outside?
What about just, just make it?
No waste?
No material. This way he can't store his bales outside, he can't store his MSW outside, milk lard outside.
No material to be stored outside.
What about no material shall be stored outside? That's right.
It already says in... Note seventeen already says no recycled material shall be stored outside.
What did it say that? You're right.
Then we talk about the vehicles and the, and the dumpsters.
So then delete the word recyclable, to say no material shall be stored outside.
Yeah.
And then that last sentence of eighteen can be deleted.
How about any fluids that are, that are a byproduct of the operation? Whether it's MSW or construction debris or wherever it comes from.
Well, if you specify that, 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 that...
I don't care.
That doesn't address any, any fluids from his day, day operation. I just wouldn't put it in there.
I, I think the, the point of eighteen is to suggest this cannot be a fluids recycling center. He's not recycling fluids except as a byproduct of something else. In other words, he cannot convert, he could not convert this business without coming back to the planning board.
Well, he's not recycling, he's disposing of it properly. Whether if it's a waste oil burner or whatever, or he's bringing it somewhere else to be processed. He's not recycling, he's just, he's disposing of it.
Let's assume he stops taking in garbage and starts to go around to restaurants and collect, um, grease oils. And he goes around to gasoline stations, stations and starts to collect that oil. Under eighteen, is that allowable use? Would that, would he be able to do that without coming back to the board for a...
Read, read your proposed eighteen.
Any fluids that are a byproduct of MSW shall be disp, shall be properly disp, contained and properly disposed of off-site in a timely manner.
The way I, the way I interpret what you just read is that's, that's the juices that are leaking out of the trash bag. That's the way I interpret that.
But it could include hydraulic oil that I put into my, as he said, that I put into my household bag and throw away. But the point is, if you have this language, he couldn't convert the business from a, the kind of recycling that he's proposing into a fluids only kind of recycling.
Well, he can't do that anyway, because it's not listed on the proposal, it's just in seventeen.
But the way he's written, I, I'm concerned that the way, that the way eighteen is written, as you've written it, would allow him to stop doing what's talked about in seventeen and do only what's talked about in eighteen. You may read it differently, and, and I could be wrong in my reading, but I was just trying to make sure that, that he was recycling solids in effect and not recycling liquids except as a byproduct of the solids.
Well, I understand your, um, your concern.
And there may be a better way to say it, Mike.
Any fluids incidentally collected through normal business operations shall be disposed of properly, go with that.
That's basically what this says, but that language is fine. The point is it's a solid recycling distribution center, not a liquid recycling distribution center.
It's a robotic rig. We now have a square wheel. Let's recycle.
Should have an economy with...
Do you see in here, oh, yeah, never mind.
Be polite, be professional, and have a plan.
That's exactly right.
Up to nine employees, you got ten parking spaces.
None of your customers will be bringing, uh, any material to you.
No, Chris, I absolutely not, I'm gonna go and collect.
Just making sure.
Personally, I think we beat this up pretty bad.
Yeah.
We're pretty good whichever way you wanna look at it.
It's a square wheel now.
Will this mean we're gonna be on a paperless event this evening?
I'm gonna make a motion so I have all these red scribbles on this pretty map.
And Craig, if you make your motion slowly enough, our recording secretary might actually be able to get it down.
Well, she's probably already got motion down. That's what I already said.
A lot of things to be said, though.
Okay, I make a motion to approve with the following conditions. Revised note seventeen to read, proposed uses of site, rec, colon, recycling distribution center, period, recycling of products, CND, parentheses, construction materials, end of parentheses, and MSW, parentheses, municipal solid waste, end of parentheses. All to be processed inside the existing building, period. All materials are wow, to be containerized, baled and shipped weekly to market, parentheses, S, period. No materials shall be stored outside. Outside storage of company vehicles and employee vehicles only. Only clean, empty dumpsters can be stored outside and shall have a watertight covering or under a waterproof roof. Revised note eighteen to read, any fluids, might need some help here, that are a byproduct of MSW shall be contained and properly disposed of off-site in a timely manner.
I'm not sure about the MSW. I'd just say any fluid collected, because if he has his dumpster out there and somebody throws a five gallon pail of...
Add note nineteen saying existing drilled well to be tested annually. The water shall be tested for the same contaminants as the previously submitted test dated three thirty-one seventeen. The test results are to be delivered to the land use coordinator. Add note nineteen, PLR three fifty, drive over temporary removable barriers to be placed under all overhead doors. Add note twenty-one, existing concrete floors shall be sealed to be watertight.
Did you, did you mention the door strips?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Now we can discuss it, John.
Sorry. The, the fluid collection. Read that again, please.
I think it's fine to read.
The, the MSW part, I think it's...
No, I think it needs to be in the MSW. We don't, what Neil says, we don't want somebody intentionally bringing fluid down there. It needs to be a byproduct of the MSW.
But if some, what if somebody throws, uh...
Well, he's gonna get it in his dumpster as MSW waste.
Okay.
Want me to read it again?
No.
Okay. Any more discussion? Yes, Neil.
Um, I'll be voting against this, not because of the good work that you've done in making this correct, but because I believe that this is not. but because I believe that this is not, um, an allowable use, a permitted use in the industrial zone. We had the discussion before, but if I read this thing as a totality banning glue manufacture, fat rendering and preparation of grease or tallow, animal reduction or garbage dumping. To me, it seems that garbage dumping would include a recycling center. It's not the kind of thing we wanted to have in an industrial zone. So I will be voting against it for that reason.
Well, you wouldn't have it in any zone, right?
Exactly. The idea that the town of Ware is going to authorize garbage recycling centers or garbage dumping in the industrial zone just strikes me as being contrary to the intent, as I understand it, of this article, so.
Is it the garbage part or the recycling part?
It's the garbage. If you were, if you were having a, um, metals recycling center, that wouldn't be an issue. But I'm one, I'm one out of five.
Well, shouldn't we get a, a legal opinion?
We can, if we want.
At, at the end of the day, um, the lawyer will tell you what he thinks, but his opinion is no better than yours or mine. And this guy needs an answer tonight. He deserves it.
Did you call for a vote?
Any more discussion? Comments? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Congratulations. Masses four one.
I must applaud you all for voting. Um, I believe it was four.
Four one.
One.
Yep.
Yes, John was not seated. So he's just commenting as a member of the public at large.
No, he's not. He's participating as an alternate member of the board.
You know, I could.
Don't lose this.
I could question this.
The vote was four to one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Because. And I do believe if we check with Mr. Drescher, they should not even be sitting at the table. They could sit there and make all the comments. I don't think so because we went through this in Bradford when I was a selectman. But I don't care if he's at the table or not.
That could probably be discussed afterwards, Craig.
What else is on the agenda? Are these folks here for something?
We don't have cable.
Alternate members may.
So I can't watch you guys on TV.
Participate in questioning the applicants or discussing the plans as a board member.
Well, we're considering coming in the future, so we didn't want to come in blind.
Are you aware that these are recorded and then broadcast on YouTube?
You did not think.
This one's going to go viral here in about fifteen minutes.
I'm trying to educate them because there's other things they could watch on YouTube too. Like the selectmen. Which are usually more animated.
Most, most people have different kinds of lives. John.
He watched YouTube before.
Can you take one and pass them down, please? In our, in our agenda, we have, well, take one and pass one over, please? Is she number one?
I can't vote on this. I don't care what you do here.
That's good.
On our agenda, I'm bringing up again site subdivision regulations. Take one and pass one down, please? The first thing passed out.
Shall we label that number one?
Sure, it's, it's part of the minutes from June something, I think. I don't remember when it was.
Today's the fifteenth.
And the last page is Mr. Fillmore's chart on the geometric standards. So basically I summarized our conversations into several pages. The second handout.
Got it.
Is portions of the subdivision regulations that I struck through what I think we should change and voted what I think we should add.
All these, all the bold changes are yours, Craig?
Yes, per, per what was talked about in June. I did not touch the geometric standards.
Okay.
Because I, A, didn't have enough time and B, I think, well, to me it would take a lot of changes and I would.
Can we, is this something you want us to take home and read?
As long as everybody remembers to read it and also nobody, please remember that you have a vesting handout from a month or two ago from Mr. Drescher.
It's a vesting handout.
A little one-page blurb from Mr. Drescher about vesting.
Is this it?
No.
Yes?
Yep.
No.
That's about our last. Last year's ordinances.
Would you like me to make copies or?
If I find it again, sure. Is that it? Doesn't look right.
Active and substantial development. Yes, this is something that we definitely had to deal with. Which was precipitated by, um, the Duck Pond subdivision.
No, but is that the email that Drescher sent me? He sent you and I an email. After we met. Very.
I can see what I've got in my legal file tomorrow. This might be it because we, we have no definition of substantial completion.
In the subdivision regulations, you're not, no, that's where it needs to be.
Is that the letter you're looking for?
Yes. It was an email from Drescher and.
I don't remember that letter. I might have been here that weekend, well, that week.
Oh, we, we made sure you didn't get it.
I'm, I'm just supposed to sit out there for a chip.
Did we ask on this cold springs thing?
That's next, no, thanks. Next, next meeting.
Thank you. I got one more. That's all I got.
Those voting numbers.
Well, I do have one more.
So this is number three.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, this is from Drescher?
And, well, he's saying.
We've got to do something.
Yes, in the words.
Thank you.
So are you going to have a public hearing on these three subjects?
We're going to have a public hearing on subdivision regulations, just like we do tonight. Once on the agenda.
This is the hearing?
Well, it's on the agenda tonight. Yes, I have an open hearing, obviously. Since you don't seem, nobody seemed to be ready to talk about it because I just handed all this stuff out.
Well, this, this doesn't say this is a hearing, it just says review and update. And I thought.
We, 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 we will have a hearing in a month.
Okay.
Of course I found it. Go pass it down for John. Oh, you got one?
Yeah.
Do you want a copy?
Everybody's got a copy.
We're all set, Chip, thank you.
Well, I like keep them so when everybody loses them next month, I'll pass them back out again.
That's the stuff that Craig wants to add.
That's the stuff we can change. The, 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 the other stuff is what? The boldest stuff is what we can talk about and revise slightly. We have minutes.
Let's do them.
I did not read March ninth, but I can real quick, click. I didn't read any of them.
We did those already.
You did those already?
Twenty-third.
Great. No wonder I didn't read them. March twenty-third.
Have a couple of things on page one. With this list about two-thirds of the way down, the line, the sign to be, I just inserted, uh, less than thirty-two square feet. Um, which, I just inserted the word than. And then, uh, one, two, three, fourth line up on the bottom place, it says still socks, are they silk?
Silk.
Yes.
S I L T socks, S O X, actually.
What is it?
Silt, S I L T socks, S O X.
S O X. It's a big bag of sand.
Layered on inexperience.
And, and just above that.
Don't, don't feel that you're alone in that, by the way.
Previous one had a lot of trouble with that one.
It says plant seven pine, parentheses spruce or fir. Does that mean any of the three?
Actually, I was specifying not pine, that was my suggestion, just strike pine. Plant seven spruce or fir.
Spruce or fir, that's what I thought. So just take out pine.
Same line at the end, apart five feet into the buffer. It wasn't five feet in front, it was five feet into the buffer. And we add and replace dead trees as needed and strike the last line. Yep.
Do what?
Add at the end and replace dead trees as needed after June first. Add and replace dead trees as needed.
So take it out from the bottom?
Yeah, take it out the bottom, that way.
I got a couple of things, same page, uh.
I got a couple of things, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, continue.
First paragraph, last two words, can we change town dump to transfer station?
That's one of them.
She was being accurate.
I know. Second line, I have been told that, uh, technically I'm opening the public hearing for public comment, so it's public comment, I can't close the public hearing. So can you change public hearing to public comment and no one commented? If I close the public hearing, we're done here, we're done talking about it. And we walk away and the applicant leaves. The hearing is over. I can't close the public hearing. We can continue it, we can approve it and it's over, we can deny it, it's over, but if I say it's.
Is this for all?
Yeah.
This is something new?
No.
Comment period is.
It's a comment, it's a public comment period, it's not a public hearing.
Public hearing is the entire process, is that?
Yeah.
All our minutes say public hearing is closed, it wasn't closed. The public comment period was closed. The public hearing is still open. We're talking a public hearing. Anyway. We can wind that later. Back to the silt socks line. Around the eighteen inch culvert, under River Road, near the existing building?
You want me to change?
To add under River Road, near the existing building. I know that was very confusing when we were talking about it.
So place still socks around eighteen inch culvert.
Under, under River Road.
Under River Road.
Near the existing building. There's two eighteen inch culverts under River Road. Trying to define which one. And, and Art was confused because there was another one up by the building. There was three eighteen inch culverts.
So what does it say now?
Place silt socks around the eighteen inch culvert, under River Road, near the existing building. Got it. Ending the maintain, maintained yearly against.
Against existing building, that doesn't make sense.
Ending the maintain, year, maintained yearly, period. Strike existing, against existing building. Your turn.
First paragraph, continuation of flatfender view, can you add, uh, the gentleman's first name is Phil, P H I L?
Phil Romano?
Yep. Um, you got to take care of the town dump. Grammatical issues, the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet point down, capitalized S for seed.
How does it read?
Seed wetland buffer, it's a separate bullet point. Then two bullet points down under the whole silk socks issue, capitalized P in place. And then up at the very top, under attendees, Neil Kirk, everybody else has their. I, I don't want to say title.
Position?
Position, Neil Kirk is blank. He, he's planning board also.
So you want parentheses, blank?
I'm not the secretary, she's the secretary.
Oh, okay, secretary.
Actually, he's secretary.
Secretary?
Yes, he is secretary.
I just went off of what was before it, so.
Well, he wasn't here for that one, so.
If you don't come, he has to do this.
Oh, so the next meeting you have to do it.
No, you're going to be here. I assure you, you're going to be here.
You might get paid double.
If he's not here, I'm not doing that either.
So Neil is secretary.
Yes.
Yes.
Are we going to be voting on that stuff tonight?
Let's get through the minutes.
Okay.
First things first.
That's it for that page for me.
Me too. Second page, I don't have very much right on.
I only had one thing and that is just about, oh, hey, where do you find all that stuff? But halfway downwards, that's current facility. Uh, just put after six thirty AM through four PM. There's, there's no, it just says six thirty, I just had it hang on.
Same sentence. Uh, shuts down between one thirty PM and two thirty PM. Previous paragraph, last line, containers that would be kept clean and empty, add a period, please.
You guys are passing the test.
Uh, three quarters of the way down, uh, paragraph starts, description, colon. Brian Hiktor, tandem cross LLC gun parts retail, comma, maintain no manufacturing on site. Not sure maintains a proper word, I'm not sure what that's supposed to be.
I think it's.
Maintain no manufacturing on site?
Stated.
Okay. Stated would make sense.
Stated would be better than maintained.
Stated no manufacturing on site?
Then add would like to do light manufacturing.
John, did you ever want to be an English teacher?
No, believe it or not, I actually failed English.
You wouldn't know it from your ability to read.
Same sentence, Brian is spelled B R Y A N. And Hiktor is actually spelled H A A K E R. H A A K E R.
Finish?
I don't know, he's a client. They don't ask.
So Brian, B R Y A N.
Then he's finished.
Yes. Well, it's, the last name is H A A K E R. I don't know how you pronounce it, Haker, I don't know.
Next paragraph down, starting on site sales. Third line below that, building guns manufacturer, A C C R.
Accessory, comma, bushing, accessories, comma, bushings, comma.
Okay. So, uh, manufacturer accessories, comma, bushings. I don't think two triggers, two gripes is right, I think it's supposed to be.
Grips.
Grips.
But I don't think it's supposed, I, I don't think wording it two grig, two triggers, two grips is right.
From triggers to grips, maybe?
Yeah.
How about triggers, comma, grips, comma?
Yeah, that's probably better.
Compensators, comma, springs, period.
Did you get all that?
Manufacturer accessories, bushings, or, or accessories, comma, bushings, from triggers, comma, gripes?
No, gripes, from.
Okay, no from.
Bushings, comma, triggers, comma, grips, comma. Compensators.
From springs.
Maybe just put, put from bushings to springs in parentheses.
Hmm?
Never mind. Next line down, required to have a federal firearms license. The first letter in each of those have to be capitalized.
Really?
Yep.
Abbreviated FFL.
Is Neil gonna go along with that?
Everyone knows, everyone knows what that is.
Next line down.
There isn't any more line down.
No more line down.
Sure, in my mind, there is.
Are we on different pages or?
No.
Which one are you on, is there anything?
Yep, is, yep, that's, to me, that's the next line down.
Sorry, it's next page, I'm on.
Okay. Ah, okay. Towards the end, capital, the capital letters F L L should be F F L.
Since we got a pause, back way up. First line, Mr. Dahlberg, near the end, you have floor was plugged, I think it's four drains were, well, four drain was plugged.
Where are you?
First line.
Mr. Dahlberg.
First page, yeah, Mike Dahlberg. Flight walk took place, how I've put those door dumpsters, floor drain was plugged. Insert the word drain. Second paragraph. Second line. I think it's refuse, not refuge. Right? They're gonna have refugees type thing out there, refuse.
Well, he may hire refugees to work on the refuse.
Might, and they're gonna be stored inside the building, so that's okay.
Well, that might interfere with Neil's limits of how many people you can have in a room.
He's only got nine employees.
That's all I have in this.
That's all I had.
The thing I had, I had a question.
We gotta put a placement here, sometime between this, um, how do you think the next motion, the application, move to accept by Mr. Cloud?
There's a link in the bottom, you clicked on the link, it's sent you to the Ware website.
Where?
And put, I don't know.
I don't like it.
Are you trying to work this at a public hearing again?
Chip does nothing. Chip forwards.
There's a approval of minutes, move up the line.
Actually, she sent it in Google Docs. You need to go into Google Documents and open it.
Just above that, you could just capitalize UPS and FedEx. Just going up of two lines, deliveries by UPS and FedEx. UPS would capitalize. And then, are the twenty-two speed, speed guns, is that what they're called?
Yep.
Is that a twenty-two gauge?
Caliber.
Actually, it should be point two two.
So, put that in, point two two caliber.
Where are you?
Uh, going back to second, second page.
No onsite sales is the paragraph, and then at the end of the second line in the paragraph, to build accessories for point two two caliber speed guns. I thought he used another term for those.
They're called race guns?
Race guns.
Yeah. I don't know if he said that, but I know that, that's how I know.
He said them both, actually.
Okay.
To me, he has.
Yeah, I didn't hear it say, that's why I questioned.
So where it says, um, up above, I wrote public hearing again, and it says Nancy Fillmore, did that say public comment?
Yes, please.
Move that the minutes are so amended, be approved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Could you please send us a PDF for our word or something, because this, it was confusing to some of us.
Send a PDF.
What I, what I, what I got was.
I got the first one in Google Docs, and the second one I got in, in Word.
What I got was a link to the town website that popped up the minutes.
Do it, do it in Word, because some of us don't do Google Docs.
Yeah, Word PDF, something easier.
Who seconded that?
Kirk moved, closed second.
I almost took that.
Are you ready for motion?
No.
No.
No. We gotta reappoint officers.
So move. Same slate, I'll move. I'll second it.
Discussion?
Although, if somebody else wants to be secretary.
Well, that would be Chuck. Kim, Kim Bruce's chair, so it's gotta be Chuck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain?
So Neil, you seconded it, who?
Frank. Any update on, any update on master plan from the other management?
I found somebody else, I can email.
Okay.
So, no, I've sent three emails, and she has not replied to any of them. She's the head of HONSHO now.
She's taken over as head cheese.
Everybody else retired, so she vaulted up.
Gotcha.
Yep, which is probably why she hasn't replied.
Yep. What would Frank do if he found out?
ISO is that the proposal?
Is that a motion?
From a month or whatever.
I think I heard Tom motion.
Did you make, did you make a motion?
To the chair.
Do we have a second to adjourn?
What is?
I think.
Frank, Frank seconded, all in favor?
Yeah, that's what they said.
Aye. Opposed, abstain?